I want to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for October 21st, 2014. I invite you to stand if you wish while Pastor Ed Gent from the Eastwood Baptist Church provides us with our invocation. Thank you Pastor.
All right, thank you for the privilege. Let's pray together. Father, what a wonderful thing it is to know you and to be able to call you my name, Savior, mighty God, counselor, wonderful Prince of Peace. God, we're so thankful for a city that considers prayer important, considers that prayer can make a difference. So tonight, Father, my prayer is very, very simple. I just pray that you give them wisdom, that you guide them in their business, and that you just bless each one of them. Bless them not only as council members, but bless them as families, and you just bestow your riches upon them. God, thank you for each one of them, bless the business tonight, and you guide each one of us to be careful to do according to your will. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you. If you'll join us in the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Ms. Shaller, please call a roll.
Commissioner Waltrip?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Denny?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here. I think we have a lot of awards and recognitions to bring up tonight, so we'll let Ms. Alexia, would you like to go first on Operation Pride? I think you have three awards for us tonight, is that correct? You have three awards for us tonight?
Three.
Yep.
Three awards, three very important awards.
Okay.
My name is Angie Alexia, I'm the Executive Director of Operation Pride. We were formed 21 years ago by the city and the county governments to take on projects that they believe would improve the community in whatever way, which is really great because it means that we can adjust to whatever that is, which is kind of unique in a nonprofit. So the first project was rescuing and restoring the Historic Depot here and work on the riverfront park. And for the past number of years also, we've been working on maintaining and enhancing the main corridors into the city. We also like to recognize individuals and organizations who have made investments in the community in their property that has enhanced the overall appeal of Bowling Green. And this is a really great city, and I think this is one of the reasons why. So we try to do them every month, but you know, sometimes we don't have them, so we really award them when we find them. And so there are three this evening, and the first is the Residential Award, and if and it is 10-11 Covington Street. This, these are some before and after shots of the property, obviously that's the before,
Close. Angie.
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 Angie. If you close that, go back to start.
She can't hear.
and that's one of the afters.
And then scroll up to computer, right in the middle, to your right.
And if you want to add anything in here, you're welcome to, but I'm sure you all have seen this as it's progressed, and it's just beautiful. Yeah, I, you know, now I'm... Oops, wrong thing, back.
There you go.
Now I'm just saying if I forgot. Okay. Yes. Back. There it is.
A lot of ivy growing.
Did you have to take down a lot of ivy?
Yes.
Yes.
That was one problem.
It's just beautiful. Okay. I'm so glad you all are here. And, and the actual resident and his wife are Dr. Kernahan, who moved back here from Louisville, I believe. And I know that there's a lot of love and sweat and tears that went into, went into all that, and it just looks beautiful, beautiful. So we would like to thank you with the Residential Pride Award for October of 2014, and I would like to take a picture. Okay, and on three, one, two, three. Okay. And on three, one, two, three. Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you to each of you who've invested in the community in Kernahans and Lawton Insurance, Ross Ritchie, and Walk to Campus. We appreciate all that you've done to make this a better community and much more attractive place to live. Thank you so much. I want to turn now to a friend of mine from the Kentucky League of Cities, J.D. Chaney, and Brianna Carroll have driven down from Frankfurt today, or excuse me, from Lexington today to provide an award for a special friend of city government. Come right up, Mr. Chaney.
Thank you Mayor, we appreciate it. We came...
Grab that thing, pull it around there.
Fix this, okay. We came to Bowling Green via Bonneville, back to Lawrenceburg, when we realized, Representative Meredith, we forgot the award. So luckily, we had a person back at the office who was willing to meet us halfway, so we apologize, Mayor and Commissioner, for arriving late. I hope that doesn't distract from what we want to do here for a good friend of the Kentucky League of Cities and Representative Michael Meredith. Last session, we probably would not have been able to pass that historic classification reform bill but for his leadership both on the local government committee and on the House floor. He really helped it pass the House. Had he not spoke on it, I don't know, we probably wouldn't have come out nearly as well. But I'm hard pressed to find any legislator who's been so consistent in supporting city issues from the whole time he's been there, and that background in city government has kept him a consistent supporter. So it is my honor to present Representative Michael Meredith with 2014 Friend of Cities Award. I don't know if you guys want to do a picture with Representative Meredith or not? Can we do that afterwards?
We can do that afterwards, and we'll get back with you on that again. Would you like to say something, Representative? Thank you.
Just want to thank J.D. for the award and the Kentucky League of Cities for all their good work in Frankfurt, and thank you Mayor, City Commissioners, for the opportunity to be here and receive the award tonight. My background in city government goes back, not just with me, but three generations of my family now in the Brownsville City Government, but it's great to have good friends like all of you all who run this city commission here. So thank you all for allowing me to accept this award tonight here at your all's meeting.
Thank you. And I noticed that you brought some of Brownsville City Government here with you tonight.
Little bit, little bit, right there. The mayor, my father.
Mayor Jerry Meredith.
Thank you all for having us.
Thank you for coming, and Assistant County Attorney Jamie Spinks is here with you. Thank you all for coming, appreciate your presence. I noticed, see, I think Representative of Senator Rand Paul's office is in the, in the audience, John Crosby. I don't know if that coincides with today's Time Magazine for the Most Interesting Man in Politics, but we appreciate you being here as well. Did I miss any of the elected officials in here? Thank you so much. I don't know, many people may not know that the new 19th district that was redrawn not only includes Emmonson County and most of northern Warren County, but it actually comes into the city of Bowling Green, and technically, you're my representative over off of Lover's Lane. So thank you again for all that you do. J.D. and Brianna, I know it was a long ride for you. Thank you for coming. You're welcome to stay. If you want to watch some more paint dry, we're happy to have you here.
Thank you all for letting us come to do this.
All right, thanks again. If you'll allow, I'll point a personal privilege for the city. We had some October 1st retirements. Fred Haley was with Parks and Recreation in the Cemetery Division, had 23 years of service. Master Police Officer and Detective Brett Kralin was with us, had some previous service and retired after 17 years of service with Bowling Green. Virginia Markham was in the Finance Department for 26 years and was here, and I understand now that we're going to go ahead and recognize Donna Lindman, who will be retiring November 1st as a laborer with Parks Maintenance Division. And then it was my privilege to attend the 2014 Kentucky Civil Rights Hall of Fame, sorry, I said that wrong, Civil Rights Hall of Fame awards that the Kentucky Commission on Human Rights did. There were four nominees from Bowling Green, Dr. Alan Anderson, a Western professor, Ms. Angela Townsend, who serves on our Human Rights Commission, Ms. Linda McCray, who was a former Director of the Human Rights Commission, and Abraham Williams. I've heard that name before.
Yeah, I've heard it, I know him.
Zed Down, the Housing Authority, he's our Director, and three of those were actually inducted, Dr. Anderson, Lynn McCray, and Abraham Williams. So we want to congratulate them on their lifelong achievement there to be inducted into the Hall of Fame. And then lastly, I understand that, just to give a quick announcement, on the election next Tuesday, the city commission candidates are on the backside of the ballot. It's a two-sided ballot, so remember to turn it over and vote for the people.
What happened?
There's too many of them.
You got bumped to the back.
You got bumped to the back, sure did.
It's just luck on the good trip that I was on.
All right, Mr. DeFebo, do you have any comments tonight?
No comments, Mayor, other than to acknowledge some good work by our Public Works Department. I'd like to announce that our Public Works Department won the Project of the Year for the Covington Street Stormwater Basin.
Good job.
So we competed against the whole state for Public Works, and we were able to win that. So that's quite an honor.
Yes.
Second, the Federal Highway Administration through its local technical assistance program puts out a challenge every year to public works departments to do what is called Build a Better Mousetrap, to come up with a way of inventing a system that can be used in public works. I'm proud to announce that Jeff Lashley and his staff won first place in the whole nation for devising a lawnmower discharge control door, the door that opens up and let the grass come out so you don't hit cars with rocks. Jeff and his department created the best mousetrap, and for that, he's worthy of our praise, and I think of our citizens for the creativity.
Is Jeff here? Jeff is here. Okay, there you go. That's all I had. All right, now we need approval of minutes for the regular meeting on September 16th, 2014.
So many.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, any discussion? Please call a roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Now we offer a time for public comments in our city commission meeting. If you have an item or an issue that you need to bring to the city's attention, this would be the opportunity for you to do that. Invite you up to the microphone, come right ahead. And if you'd start with your name and address, please, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Kerry Northrup. My wife and I live at 281 Augusta Avenue. Last March, my understanding is, the city enacted its very first ordinance to try to put some structure to towing in the city. And I know that towing is an issue which kind of beleagers the government a bit, and when I mentioned it to a couple of you earlier, the reaction was predictably, oh, not that again. But the reason why I'm here today, though, is to try to convince you to perhaps give your city attorney and others in your administration a little bit of support in maybe furthering the ordinance and furthering some of the actions that you put in place to try to control or rein in, an activity that is probably growing faster than maybe you realize. According to your own records, city records, since the beginning of the year, there have been nearly 1,400 private towings in Bowling Green. Since your ordinance was enacted in March, almost 1,200, a little over 1,100. At that rate, the total number of private toes in the city, if it just kept going at that rate, would be about 2,000 by the end of the year, or essentially one for every 30 residents in the city. Either Bowling Green is attracting some of the most negligent parkers that you can find in any one locality, or there's something else going on. Having lived here on and off for five years and knowing how kind and friendly and supportive a community this is, great place to live and a great place to work, I'm more in supportive of the idea that there's something a little bit rotten about the towing business in the city. And in fact, my investigations after my wife and I were towed a couple of weeks ago, which was a surprise for us, started looking into it, has revealed a number of things that I think should draw your attention. The ordinance was a good first start, but I think there's a great deal of diligence, due diligence, that is required to make sure that this doesn't turn into basically just one big tow trap, like a speed trap somewhere on the interstate between Louisville and Nashville. One of the main reasons I'm here today to talk to you is because I have no other place to go talk. I looked all over for a place to register a complaint, to file a complaint with somebody who had authority and interest and the ability to enforce, and although you've got an ordinance in place to regulate towing, there is no such office. I tried the police department, but they say it's a civil matter, it's not a criminal matter. I tried the licensing division, they don't have an enforcement activity concerning people who get licenses to tow. You talk to the landowner, and it pushes you to the tow operator, you talk to the tow operator, they push you to the landowner, talk to the city manager, or the city attorney, you're in the same boat. There is no place to go and register a complaint. Your only option is, if you want to take on the task at the expense of having to pursue something in civil court. And frankly, it shouldn't be that hard, especially for an activity which is one of the few officially sanctioned, government sanctioned, private takings of private property that can occur, someone coming and taking your car off of a piece of property that otherwise is a public, public piece of property for some purpose. What I have discovered in my research is that in other communities where there are towing ordinances, one of the things that they usually enact or often enact in parallel is a prohibition on what's called variously patrol towing or cruising for cars. We don't have that here. As a consequence, you know, with patrol towing ban, towing companies aren't allowed to simply stake out property and then hang out watching for people, taking pictures of them as they leave their cars to go into restaurants and whatever, and then towing their cars. Instead, a property owner has to specifically call and say, there's a problem with this vehicle. And I'm the first to say there are very valid reasons for towing, safety, access to property, just preserving private property rights to a certain extent, ensuring a good environment for businesses to be able to get traffic in and out. But that's not what is happening here. What's happening here is we have one tow company that I'm familiar with that is basically seeking out situations that they can stake out and put the minimum signage up and create these kind of tow traps. Interestingly enough, when I went over to a collision place in order to see about the repairs to the $1,800 worth of damage that the tow company did to my car in the process of towing, which also is not something that the ordinance holds them liable for, and I can only go after them in court for, the owner of the collision shop came out when he heard us talking to his people and said, you know, those folks were in my office just about a year ago, because I'm right here next to Smokey Bones, a very popular night spot, and they said this was a perfect place for them to be able to put their signs up, and they'd sit over there at Best Buy and just watch them and wait for them, and then come in and tow them out. It's an entirely predatory business model. In fact, when I talked with the owner of the tow company when I was trying to reclaim my car, he acknowledged that. He says, he talks about it as a business model he imported from Nashville. Very, very proud of it, and I guess he should be, because at the rate that he's towing and the number and the amount that he's allowed to charge, this is at least a quarter of a million dollar business a year that is going on with essentially very little overhead on the part of the property owners for this thing. So I'd urge an expansion of the ordinance to prohibit patrol towing or cruising for cars, to prohibit tow companies from setting their own arbitrary rules about who and who cannot be towed. For instance, if you park somewhere and you decide not to go into the phone company office because it looks pretty busy, and instead you want to step over here and get a burger at the restaurant, by the time you come back out, your car can be gone, will be gone in many cases. 15 people got towed the day that I got towed. And that's just because they decide if you walk into here instead of into there, as far as they're concerned, you're not abiding by the rules, that you have to be a patron of this business to be able to park in this parking lot. That, like I said, seems fairly arbitrary. Beyond that, there are several issues of compliance with the ordinance and compliance with licensing that the city's not following up on. It has nobody to go out and check, for instance, when the ordinance says that a site where people get towed has to have conspicuous signage. What is conspicuous, and is this area particularly appropriately signed? Nobody's checking that. Does the tow operator have a contract with the property owner that actually allows him to tow? What's the nature of that contract? Nobody's following up on that. Just something as simple as, the ordinance requires them now, one of the improvements over not having the ordinance, to call in every time that they tow, so that we know how many times they tow. Unfortunately, on the day that I was towed, the tow operators at the one company that I was dealing with were quite proud of the fact, and stated several times that it had been a good day for them that Sunday afternoon because they towed 15 vehicles. According to the city's records, there are only 13 vehicles called in, and not all from that one towing company. Is anybody checking up and making sure that in fact the ordinance is being complied with? At the moment, the answer to that question seems to be no. Aside from enforcing, you know, following up on the ordinance and ensuring compliance and trying to rein in this patrol towing, I'd also urge you to seriously consider somehow enacting or publicizing or just creating a brochure that the tow owners are required to hand to anybody that they're dealing with in reclaiming their cars, and make sure that those people in a very vulnerable moment of their lives, they have no car, they don't know how they're going to get to where they're supposed to get to, they probably had a hard time getting there, making sure they know what their rights are in that situation. For instance, that they have a right to file a complaint, and where to go to file that complaint if they have, if they have a problem. That they have the right to inspect their vehicle before they accept it back. I had to fight for my right to inspect my vehicle, and when I did, discovered damage on the door where they had wrenched it open and reached in with their metal rod to prod at the controls to try to get the thing open, and then later on, damage underneath the car from when they rolled it out through one of the... matter. I tried the licensing division, they don't have an enforcement activity concerning people who get licenses to tow. You talk to the landowner and he pushes you to the tow operator, you talk to the tow operator, they push you to the landowner. Talk to the city manager, or the city attorney, you're in the same boat. There is no place to go and register a complaint. Your only option is, if you want to take on the task and the expense of having to pursue something in civil court. And frankly, it shouldn't be that hard, especially for an activity which is one of the few officially sanctioned, government sanctioned, private takings of private property that can occur, someone coming and taking your car off of a piece of property that otherwise is a public piece of property for some purpose. What I have discovered in my research is that in other communities where there are towing ordinances, one of the things that they usually enact or often enact in parallel is a prohibition on what's called variously patrol towing or cruising for cars. We don't have that here. As a consequence, you know, with patrol towing ban, towing companies aren't allowed to simply stake out property and then hang out watching for people, taking pictures of them as they leave their cars to go into restaurants and whatever, and then towing their cars. Instead, a property owner has to specifically call and say, "There's a problem with this vehicle." And I'm the first to say there are very valid reasons for towing. Safety, access to property, just preserving private property rights to a certain extent, ensuring a good environment for businesses to be able to get traffic in and out. But that's not what is happening here. What's happening here is we have one tow company that I'm familiar with that is basically seeking out situations that they can stake out and put the minimum signage up and create these kind of tow traps. Interestingly enough, when I went over to a collision place in order to see about the repairs to the $1,800 worth of damage that the tow company did to my car in the process of towing, which also is not something that the ordinance holds them liable for, and I can only go after them in court for, the owner of the collision shop came out when he heard us talking to his people and said, "You know, those folks were in my office just about a year ago, because I'm right here next to Smokey Bones, a very popular night spot, and they said this was a perfect place for them to be able to put their signs up, and they'd sit over there at Best Buy and just watch them and wait for them, and then come in and tow them out." It's an entirely predatory business model. In fact, when I talked with the owner of the tow company when I was trying to reclaim my car, he acknowledged that. He says, he talks about it as a business model he imported from Nashville. Very proud of it, and I guess he should be, because at the rate that he's towing and the number and the amount that he's allowed to charge, this is at least a quarter of a million dollar business a year that is going on with essentially very little overhead on the part of the property owners for this thing. So I'd urge an expansion of the ordinance to prohibit patrol towing or cruising for cars, to prohibit tow companies from setting their own arbitrary rules about who and who cannot be towed. For instance, if you park somewhere and you decide not to go into the phone company office because it looks pretty busy, and instead you want to step over here and get a burger at the restaurant, by the time you come back out, your car can be gone, will be gone in many cases. Fifteen people got towed the day that I got towed. And that's just because they decide if you walk into here instead of into there, as far as they're concerned, you're not abiding by the rules, that you have to be a patron of this business to be able to park in this parking lot. That, like I said, seems fairly arbitrary. Beyond that, there are several issues of compliance with the ordinance and compliance with licensing that the city's not following up on. It has nobody to go out and check, for instance, when the ordinance says that a site where people get towed has to have conspicuous signage. What is conspicuous and is this area particularly appropriately signed? Nobody's checking that. Does the tow operator have a contract with the property owner that actually allows him to tow? What's the nature of that contract? Nobody's following up on that. Just something as simple as, the ordinance requires them now, one of the improvements over not having the ordinance, to call in every time that they tow, so that we know how many times they tow. Unfortunately, on the day that I was towed, the tow operators at the one company that I was dealing with were quite proud of the fact and stated several times that it had been a good day for them that Sunday afternoon because they towed 15 vehicles. According to the city's records, there are only 13 vehicles called in and not all from that one towing company. Is anybody checking up and making sure that in fact the ordinance is being complied with? At the moment, the answer to that question seems to be no. Aside from enforcing, you know, following up on the ordinance and ensuring compliance and trying to rein in this patrol towing, I'd also urge you to seriously consider somehow enacting or publicizing or just creating a brochure that the tow owners are required to hand to anybody that they're dealing with in reclaiming their cars, that makes sure that those people, in a very vulnerable moment of their lives, they have no car, they don't know how they're going to get to where they're supposed to get to, they probably had a hard time getting there, making sure they know what their rights are in that situation. For instance, that they have a right to file a complaint and where to go to file that complaint if they have a problem. That they have the right to inspect their vehicle before they accept it back. I had to fight for my right to inspect my vehicle, and when I did, discovered damage on the door where they had wrenched it open and reached in with their metal rod to prod at the controls to try to get the thing open, and then later on, damage underneath the car from when they rolled it out through one of the dips on Campbell Lane.
Okay, Mr. Northrup.
You got it, stop me.
We've got a lot on the agenda. Could I ask you to do this? Could you put that in an email to me and I'll make sure that all the Commissioners get...
Gene Harmon already has that email.
Is it okay?
If I could just add just one other thing, you know, your tow companies are actually operating under your license and they're actually using your authority. The tow company tried to tell me essentially they were operating as a branch of the police department, saying their lot was an official police impound lot, which is, you know, they're trying to operate under colored authority, which was just not the case. They tried to get me to sign a waiver giving up all my rights to pursue any other activities, and when I challenged that, said it's required by the ordinance, it's required by the city. So without some further follow-up and some diligence on the city's part, it's nice that we've got an ordinance out there that's reining these people in to a certain extent and setting a limit on how much they can pay, but, you know, there's no bark with that bite, so it's no bite with bark, I guess is the way it ought to go.
Mr. Denning?
The 15 toes that you were talking about that day, and let me say this, I have a very close, close friend whose vehicle was towed from the same lot, as I mentioned to you downstairs, and by the same company, of course. The 15 toes, were they from that same lot?
According to the records from the city, no, they weren't. They were from a variety of places. But that does raise a point. When you look at these records, you see a number of locations that just are constantly reoccurring. Campus Evolution Villages, Regency Park Apartments, The Registry, Greenwood Villa, Point at Western. Either, once again, you've got the dumbest people parking in these lots that they don't learn over a period of weeks and months of hundreds of cars being towed from these things, or there's a problem with how those lots and how the signage is set up, so these people are unknowingly being pulled. Somebody ought to take a look at that.
Are those toes by the same company?
The information that I have, only for about a week, gives a tow identification. I've been able to identify, just from my own experience, three tow trucks that are associated with one particular company. I haven't yet had a chance to do a detailed data analysis, other than a basic geographic and numerical analysis, to find out how many of them are from any one company, but a large number of them, particularly for these apartment complexes, seem to be all one company.
Did you have one or two locations that you had to go to when you were trying to retrieve your vehicle?
The ordinance requires tow companies to register their address with the city where the impound lot is. In fact, the address that is provided even by police dispatch for where to pick up your car, in this particular case, is not the address of the impound lot, it's the address of a used car lot, and if you just get there in the middle of the night with no further directions, fortunately, we had somebody we could follow, you'd have no idea where to go to get your car. The required phone number on the signage for calling drops you into an unidentified voice mailbox from which, although the ordinance requires that they call you back within an hour, at least in my experience, I never got a call back.
The same thing happened with my friend.
Yeah. So there's a lot of loose ends out here that I'd urge the Commission to take a look at.
Please, if you would, forward that email to me as well. My email's on the city's address, the city's website.
Aye, aye.
Thank you, thank you, sir. All right, was there anyone else? All right, we'll go to the first item on the agenda, which is second reading of ordinance BG 2014-27.
Ordinance Resoning Real Estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 1.16 acres from GB General Business to HB Highway Business located at 1288 Campbell Lane, presently owned by William and Sandra Buzard with NTI Investments LLC as contract bender.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill. Over to any discussion. Please call or roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-194.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of April N. Fike to the position of Housing Recertification Specialist in the Neighborhood and Community Services Department.
So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. MB Stoner recently retired, creating a vacancy in the Section 8 function of the Neighborhood and Community Services Department. We went out to a public advertisement, we had 150 applicants for one position. From that process, we were able to distill it down to six candidates. We're here tonight to recommend April Fike for the position. She has hands-on Section 8 experience in Morgantown, Kentucky, and is a certified occupancy specialist. I believe April is here.
Congratulations, April. Thanks for coming down. Any comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2014-28.
Ordinance relating to Classification Pay Schedule. Ordinance amending the Classification Pay Schedule G for general classified employees of the City of Bowling Green for fiscal year 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Denning, Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. In this year's budget, we approve the filling of the grantsman position. Formerly, this was held by Brent Childers. There was some discussion about how the position should be titled and paid. Brent wanted to pay what he was paid. I thought that we could secure sufficient talent for a lesser rate. I was wrong. Learned that it's difficult to secure the people with the right credentials for pay classification 121. It used to be 125. We have done a series of interviews, and we found a qualified person who'd be willing to take this position for a negotiated 123. That's still higher than what he is making in his current position.
Higher or lower? Pardon? You said higher, you meant lower?
Lower. This is lower than what he's making now, but so even 123 is not profligate. It probably should be a higher position, but our feeling was that we wanted to get the best talent at the lowest possible cost. Sometime I'm right about that, sometime I'm wrong, and I was incorrect. It should have been classified higher, so I'm here to say, oops, I thought I could get the talent for less, but it's going to cost a little more. The good news, it's still lower than we paid years ago, so...
You're not saying, you're talking about classification number 123?
Yes, yes, yes. It used to be 125. I thought we can...
No, I just want to make sure, I'm going to interpret it as 123,000.
Oh, no way. And so, you know, I'm okay with being wrong if we're saving money, and we still are, and it should have been higher, and it's my mistake.
Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
On a 123 classification, are there certain education requirements?
Michael, are you here?
I wouldn't know that.
They're not necessarily tied to a specific grade, but yes, obviously, we have higher education and experience requirements, typically the higher the grade is. But the minimum requirements for this job were a bachelor's degree and four years' experience. The candidate that we hope to propose to at the next meeting has the bachelor's degree and eight years of experience.
So a college degree is...
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Please call or roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-195.
Municipal Order endorsing the Quiver Ventures LLC Economic Development Project in Warren County and further approving application for Economic Development Bond Grant from the Kentucky Cabinet for Economic Development and requesting grant in the amount of $750,000 to benefit Quiver Ventures LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Chamber of Commerce, our agent for economic development, has worked with the state to attract a company known as Quiver Ventures and to access economic development bond grant funds from the state. If successful, this will create 80 new jobs at a fairly significant wage of $65,000. The good part about this is, this is state money, and our function is simply to act as a pass-through for these bond funds. There's no obligation on behalf of the city, Gene, to look at that and to indemnify that being the case. Meredith Robinson is here, if you have any questions.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Merritt? Please call or roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-196.
Municipal Order accepting the Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated Financial Statements ending June 30th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbe.
When the city issued a general obligation bond, we made a condition of that action to receive a yearly financial statement from the ITA. We're here tonight to officially receive that statement. It's important to know that that statement has been vetted to the ITA Board, at which Melinda and I are members, as well as the Finance Committee of the ITA, which Jeff and I are members. We are comfortable with these results. Meredith, again, is here, if you want to ask her any questions.
This is a clean audit again, so we appreciate all the work that they've done. Any other comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2014-29.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 23 Water and Sewer of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordnances related to limitations on wastewater discharges as proposed by Bowling Green Municipal Utilities.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbe.
As we're all aware, our sister agency, BGMU, does wastewater services on behalf of the city and our citizens. Under their responsibility, they discharge some level contaminants after treatment into the Barren River pursuant to a heavily regulated ordinance. They're allowed to do that under a certain prescribed maximum contaminant levels. That's all described in a pre-treatment permit process that has to be done by an engineer first, then approved by the state engineer, then approved by BGMU, and approved finally here. These amendments to what is allowed to be discharged are fairly nominal, you see the memo there. Mark Iverson is here, if you'd like to go over the changes in the MCLs.
Any comments or questions?
Was that correct, Mark?
Okay. Thank you, Mark, for being here. Please call or roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-197.
Municipal Order accepting and authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement on behalf of the Bowling Green, on behalf of the City of Bowling Green, with the Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet for Federal Victims of Crime Act 2014 funds in the amount of $35,978.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Denning and second by Hill, Mr. DeFebbe.
This is the 22nd year that the City of Bowling Green has participated in receiving funds from the federal government to help the victims of crime. We have a staff person, April Fulcher, who performs the needed services for those who are victims. This money comes directly to us from the Kentucky Justice and Safety Cabinet and is used in part to offset April's salary. We recommend your approval.
Any comments or questions? This is the first time we've been here when she didn't actually show up, yeah. So please call or roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-198.
Municipal Order authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for the 2014 Homeland Security Grant Program in the amount of $60,000 for the purchase of in-car cameras for the police department.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbe.
This is the type of grant we like. There is no match. We're being given $60,000 by Homeland Security to purchase, under their approval, 30 in-car cameras, so...
Ms. Nash is here, if you have any questions. Any comments or questions? Appreciate you coming. Please call or roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-199.
Municipal Order approving amended lease agreement with T Squares LLC doing business as T by U for lease of a portion of the public sidewalk located in front of 906 State Street.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbe.
As the Commission may know and the public may remember, we, the city commission leases a part of the sidewalk in front of certain businesses to allow tables and chairs to be put out outside to extend the eating or drinking experience. Tonight, we've been approached by T Squares. I would ask Gene to address this, given the nuance of this request and its connection to liquor sales. Gene?
Thank you. This one's a little bit different. We already have a lease agreement with T by U, but prior to this, they didn't have alcohol. What they're currently doing is applying for an alcohol license. The only way they can meet is requirement that they must have at least 50 seats to qualify for the license that they want. The only way they can do that is by counting our chairs outside, which is fine, but when the state inspector came down to review their site as part of the process of reviewing their application, I think he raised some questions related to us, or he raised some questions to them concerning the hours of operation. Normally, the lease agreement is from 11:00 in the morning until midnight. That conflicts, not really conflicts, but it's not the same as the operating hours that we allow people to sell alcohol on. I think he had some concerns that those hours did not agree with the hours that they could in fact sell alcohol, and he recommended to them that the lease agreement be amended to agree with those same hours. So the only thing we're really doing, basically restating the whole lease agreement, but the only thing we changed, now the language says the hours of operation, or the lease shall be during the operating hours of the lessee. We eliminated 11:00 and midnight, basically said, "As long as you're open, you can now serve alcohol," because otherwise, they've got a problem with their 50 seats.
It's my understanding they're not open at late anyway.
No, they're not going to start selling at 6:00 in the morning, they're not going to be open, that's what they're telling us, until 2:00 in the morning. But just the ABC inspector raised some questions, and we thought this is the easiest way out.
As with the other lessees that we have, are they going to have to change on the next time around?
They don't have to. They may raise some questions, some of them may want to, but no, this one is unique because they have to have our seats, the lease of 50 seats. Everybody else does not have that issue.
I understand. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank you for coming, appreciate you being here. It was a good supper, too, appreciate it. Municipal Order 2014-200.
Paid for it.
We paid, we went to supper.
Paid for a supper.
We went to supper, we paid for supper. I'm sorry, where were we? Municipal Order 2014-200.
Municipal Order accepting and ratifying actions of city officials in expressing a grant agreement and executing a grant agreement among the Bowling Green Warren County Regional Airport Board, the City of Bowling Green, Warren County, and the Federal Aviation Administration related to an update to the airport layout plan and an airport geographic information system survey.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbe.
Even though we only had one meeting this month, we still had to take some action on a timely basis. We were approached by the airport board to have our mayor sign a grant request to the Federal Aviation Administration for funding for a federal layout plan and a GIS system at the airport. Bruce has given tacit approval for that. You're here to ratify his action. FAA will provide $475,000 of the $529,000 total cost. Our responsibility is only $7,914.50. It's a pretty good deal, we're only responsible for 1.5%, so we recommend your approval.
Comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-201.
Municipal order approving the disadvantaged business enterprises plan for the City of Bowling Green Transit Program and authorizing its submission to the Federal Transportation Administration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febow.
As we know from our experience with the CDBG program, anytime you take federal money, you're generally required to follow their planning and reporting requirements. Same thing with the community action with the transit. They're required to develop a disadvantaged business enterprise plan for the function in the city. They have done that. We're required to approve that. I think the target is approximately 4%. Brent is here if you have any questions about this pass-through responsibility.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-202.
Municipal order authorizing a depository agreement between the City of Bowling Green Neighborhood and Community Services Department, Housing Division, and PNC Bank N.A. for housing choice voucher program funding.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Williams, second by Waltrip. Mr. Febow.
Just to illustrate the degree of which HUD goes in the management of its funds, we are required to pass forward a deposit agreement between us and our bank to HUD in case, for some reason, we go out of business and they need to recapture the funds. There was a bank agreement that signed years ago, but HUD wanted a new one approved by you. Brent's here if you have any questions. This changes nothing other than to have clearer reporting to HUD, given that we already have a banking relationship with PNC. Again, Brent is here if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-203.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-01 for the Sloan Convention Center exterior finishes project from Carter Douglas Company LLC of Russellville, Kentucky in the amount not to exceed $100,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febow.
I think the City Commission, sitting as the Sloan Convention Center Board, understand this particular municipal order. It's essentially requesting that we provide no more than $100,000 to allow Carter Douglas to affect exterior repairs to the Sloan Convention Center. The exterior envelope needs some treatment, patching, repairing, removal of rotting areas, and repainting. Michael Grubbs, your executive director of the Convention Center, is here if you have any questions.
And the Convention Center Board also includes County Judge Mike Buchanan. And these funds come from funding that comes through the Convention Center. They're not general fund dollars. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-204.
Municipal order authorizing renewal of bid number 2012-49 for turnout gear for the fire department from Bluegrass Uniforms of Bowling Green, Kentucky, for 20 additional sets at a unit price of $2,287.25 per set, with a total amount not to exceed $45,745.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill. Mr. Febow.
Two years ago, we went out to bid for turnout gear, otherwise known as bunker gear, that the firemen use to, when they enter a fire scene, their essential firefighting uniform. That has a two-year window allowing us to renew it for two periods. We did the first renewal last year. This is the second and last renewal under that bid. We'd like to purchase 20 additional sets of turnout gear primarily for new recruits who are coming onto the force, as well as scheduled replacement. Chief Todd Napier is here if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-205.
Municipal order authorizing the continuation of software subscription and maintenance services from OpenText Incorporated in the amount of $26,126.2.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. Mr. Febow.
One of the functions we perform in our IT department is document management and imaging. This provides for us the ability to have the service contract for that function. The price is $26,126. It's significant to note that this is with no increase over last year. Lynn is here if you have any questions.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-206.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-16 for COBAN in-car camera expansion project from JVK Network Consulting LTD of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $25,526.73.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febow.
As we're all aware, most of the police cars have in-car cameras, and that video or camera footage is no good unless you can extract it. This particular program allows us to extract and download, upload, the video for use by the police department. The cost is, we went out to bid, we had two bidders. The local bidder, JVK, was the lowest and best. Lynn is here if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-207.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-12 for outdoor non-elevated aluminum bleachers for Roland Bland, Karyakis, and Lovers Lane Parks from Toadvine Enterprises Incorporated of Fisherville, Kentucky, in the amount of $64,537.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. Mr. Febow.
I think we should take some pride in that our parking wreck department, as well as our safety vision, is constantly checking for hazards in the city. There's new regulations that come out about bleachers. We did an inspection, and we discovered that we had 13 non-compliant bleachers under the new standards. We didn't let that sit. We went out to bid. We had six bidders, and the low bidder was, and lowest and responsible bidder was Toadvine Enterprises from Fisherville, Kentucky. This will allow us to replace three bleachers at Roland Bland, two at Karyakis, and eight at Lovers Lane Soccer Complex. Little Brent is here if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions?
I'm assuming that non-elevated means they sit on the ground?
They still have stair steps, but they're not on poles.
It's a center aisle. You can walk up and get on to get in the bleacher, just enough space to have basically a staircase in the middle of the bleachers.
Is it a rail down the middle of the aisle?
Not necessarily, no. Not necessarily, but it does have the cage around the entire, I guess, three sides of the bleachers, so no falling on the left side, right side, or the back.
Can you explain briefly what the new changes were?
That, in essence, I can read through, it's really is having riser board, which would assist with the staircase, in essence, and then that's the side and back rails. And then, really, that's it. The fencing around the back and side is to forfall hazards, is what it amounts to, so...
Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-208.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting negotiations after sealed bidding for bid number 2015-08 for McClellan Road widening and overlay from Scotty's Contracting and Stone LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $198,969.4.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Dunning. Mr. Febow.
One of our top road projects, as determined by the Board of Commissioners, was the McClellan Road Widening Project. It was such a priority, we accelerated the completion of that, and tonight, we're here to ask you to approve the final negotiated amount of $198,969 to allow us to do the necessary widening there. Scotty's Contracting and Stone is negotiated only bidder, and we clarified items in the bid and our expectation, which resulted in a lower overall price by us sitting and clarifying the bid. Jeff Lashley, who was the chief negotiator, is here if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions? Jeff, you wouldn't mind emailing me the diagram of the road, so I can show people where it's going to be? I've had three questions already about them. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-209.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-17 for the installation of Southwood Court Curb Island from Scott &amp; Murphy Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $31,095.50.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febow.
A number of months ago, staff, and maybe some of you all, received complaints from Berry Plastics and other businesses in the southern industrial park. We did a beta test of solution there, Jeff did, and it worked, and we went out to a final bid to create a curbing island. The particular problem was that people who were making deliveries to places other than Berry were blocking and queuing up and blocking the entrance to Berry Plastics. This curbing island would stop that from happening and allow Berry continue to do business in the city and employ people, so we thought it was important to do, and I think Berry Plastics will be happy with your responsiveness.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-210.
Municipal order authorizing change order number two to bid number 2014-14 for the City Hall Annex and Neighborhood and Community Services Building renovation project from Scott, Murphy, and Daniel LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $280,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febow.
As anyone who has done any kind of rehabilitation and contracting, anytime you involve an older building, there's always questions that are unpredictable about what's underneath, what you see. In our rehab of the annex, we discovered there may be some problems with the ductwork there that won't, A, allow for the greatest safe movement of air. Jeff and I talked, and we thought it'd be best to remove that old ductwork and have a level playing field if necessary, and we believe that we can do this for under $200,000. Bless you. Katie has found the money in the project and/or other contingency funds, and Jeff is here if you have any questions in particular to what the problem is there. I think I sent an email to you prior.
Comments or questions?
Can I make one more comment?
Sure.
Next week, we have open house at the new NCS building on top of the hill, the old Life Skills Building, the dream lives, so we'll be, we invite people to come and see the beautiful new building. That was part one of this project.
Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-211.
Municipal order approving amendments to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Manual of Purchasing Policies and Procedures.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febow.
At 4:00, we had a show and tell about new recommendations to the purchasing policy. Marilyn Paragon and Katie did a nice job of explaining those few changes. We're here tonight to ask you to approve those changes formally. Marilyn is here to answer any questions that may have surfaced since 4:00, or Katie can help, too.
That's a good presentation. I think we all understood it. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Please call the roll. Thank you for looking into it.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2014-212.
Municipal order approving fiscal years 2014, 2015 through 2017, 2018 capital improvement program for the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. Mr. Febow.
Thank you. In addition to the operating budget, the other part of our financial profile is the capital improvement program. That's done on a three-year projected basis. A significant part of the three years, obviously, is the one year that we actually budget and do. The remaining two years reflect a vision statement by both staff and the Board of Commissioners about those things that we'd like to do in the future if it had the money, and those remain a priority. We put together the plan. It's in your packet. We've discussed this before at retreat. Marilyn Paragon, who's been tasked, along with Katie, to be more involved in this, is here if you have any questions.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2014-30.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordinances, ordinance amending Chapter 6 Building Regulations, Subchapter 6-4 Fees of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to revise building plan review fees for the review of multiple identical buildings.
Summit.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Fable?
Yeah, although the mayor is sponsor, I can pitch it along with Brent Childers with this. We have been approached by various contractors and developers about our willingness to change our collection of fees for what is called plan review. There is construction of a building and the fees for that, but there's also original plan fees. Sometimes there's buildings that are presented that are duplicate and we have heretofore charged the same amount. Brent has studied the issue and is here tonight to explain some of the changes that we would like to recommend to the commission.
Mr. Fable?
Excuse me, Mr. Childers. Sorry.
We do look alike a little bit.
I've said to Fable over so much tonight.
I don't know that I agree with his last statement there, but thank you for the opportunity to come out this evening. What Mr. Fable was talking about is our plan review fees is really just looking at lines on paper. So I want to explain the kind of separation here. So what a contractor or developer does, they submit their building plans to us, we look at it, and we have the opportunity to do that here locally. There's only, I believe, 27 jurisdictions in the state that can do that. We are one of those. And for that, we also charge a plan review fee. That is based on the square footage of the building. That's a, for a residential, it's 13 cents per square foot. And it changes by occupancy type, but it goes anywhere from, I think, 12 to 15 cents to kind of give you an idea. And what we were approached with a couple of years ago was if I'm building the same building three times, you're only looking at that plan once, is really what it was. And we understood the argument and we talked about it with the people that brought it before us. We did some research, found some, we did find that Elizabeth Town does have a similar type program, but they do change some of the other aspects of it. So we wanted to kind of offer up a protocol for how this would work. And this is just talking about the plan review fees. Building permit fees are unchanged in this. And that's what really, that's when you're getting into actually starting construction. And the theory there is we're going to have to go out and inspect every building that's permitted, so there's still the duplication of work. If you build it 10 times, we're making 10 sets of inspections out there. So this is where there is a reduction in the amount of work. So the protocol that we established was they have to be identical. They have to be identical. Whenever we're looking at identical, we're really looking at the floor plan and how it lays. If there's, you know, a minor tweak in there, then that starts to change everything. And whenever I say that, we're not looking at it from the cosmetic aspect, because those aren't things that we're looking at in the building code. Whenever I say that, I mean paint colors. If you want to paint one wall yellow, one wall blue, that's not something that we would review anyway, so that's fine. Generally, where we see this is in apartment complexes and storage units. Those are the two types of construction where we generally see duplicate building construction. If you think about an apartment complex, you know, you go in, you have your main office, and then there's building A, B, C, D, E, F. And they're all pretty much the same building centered around a center courtyard. So that's where we tend to see a lot of this, and also in your rental storage units. The buildings have to be submitted at the same time. That way, you know, because codes change, things change over time, local ordinances change, they have to be at the same time. So if a developer comes in and wants to permit three buildings, three identical buildings, then they're going to pay building one at the full rate, building two and three, $250 for the plan review. And depending on the size of the building will dictate what the initial plan review fee will be. The $250, that is currently the minimum plan review price as set in the building code. So the ordinance reflects the minimum plan review fee by the building code. So there is a built-in escalation. So if the building code amends in four or five years and it goes to 500, then we'll start charging 500. So it's the minimum as set forth in the building code. In our discussions with this, with the people that brought this to our attention, we, you know, they were thinking, well, only the building department's looking at it. And, you know, I tried to explain, no, we have a kind of a, we have a, we serve as the clearinghouse for that, as the building department, but there's still other reviewers that are part of that, planning and zoning, public works, the fire department, licensing, there's some other people that are involved in the review process. So we felt like there should be an additional charge for the extra plans to justify the work that they're still looking at. Public Works is still going to look at, even though they might have these four buildings on a lot, they're going to look at how do those impact that lot, because there are four buildings there. So the big things are have to be identical, have to be submitted at the same time, and the other part was part of the same development. We, there was some discussion on whether or not we should do that. We felt that it was important. We talked about lot or development, and we felt like if they're part of the same development and they're all part of the same project, they're all part of the same complex. So that's why we put that in there. But it was, those are the three main conditions that we came up with as a protocol for this reduction to take place. If you have any questions or comments, I'd be glad to entertain this.
Did this satisfy what the developers wanted in the beginning, pretty much?
Yes. I think they would have preferred to have zero
Certainly.
on the other ones, but I felt like we made the argument to justify the minimum plan review fee there.
I commend the staff for doing this. This is one of the things, and obviously trying to grow and trying to do things in a streamlined way. Commend staff for bringing this forward.
Took about a year of negotiation.
Very good.
I like the fact that we respond to these requests. We don't just slough them off and all, it's what it is. Thank you for the hard work.
Very good.
Any comments or questions?
Never know where a good idea is going to come from, do you?
That's true. Please call or roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2014 to 13.
Municipal Order authorizing a contribution from the city's general fund in the amount of $400,000 to the Bowling Green Police and Firefighters Retirement Fund for fiscal year 2015.
Second.
Motion by Dunning, second by Hill.
I will defer to Jeff Meisel, who serves on the committee with your courtesy. Jeff?
Thank you. We have budgeted $400,000 again for FY15 to contribute to the police and fire pension fund. That fund is doing a lot better than it was a couple of years ago. We are, as of January 1st of 2014, I believe we were around 98% funded. That's assuming no more COLAs were to be given in the future. There was a vote to give 1.5% COLA for this fiscal year FY15. So one thing we are changing while I got your attention too is instead of a January 1st actuarial study, we're going to move that to a June 30th actuarial study in order to comply with some GASB, GASB 67 requirements, providing some information that it requires. So we won't get another snapshot of kind of where we're at until June of next year, but at that time, we'll look at it again. We're going to look at this year by year to see where we're at with the funding. But the city did commit to contribute $400,000 last year to help get the fund back to a 100% funding level. So that along with the 0% COLA that we did for one year, and along with the 12.65 investment return last year, really helped get the fund back on its feet. I think we recovered about $1.2 million in just one year. So we're on the right track. We're going to go ahead and do this 400, I would recommend we do this $400,000, it's in the budget. And then we look at the June 30th report when it comes in and make the decision from there on where we go.
I want to thank Bob Kirby and Mike Jefferson
Absolutely.
of Hilliard Lounge for helping us with that return.
Right. That's a closed fund. There are no employee contributions that go, it's a closed fund. So we're kind of burning the candle at both ends. You have to, it's a delicate balance, so they do a good job.
Any other comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance 2014-31.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number one to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for fiscal year 2015.
Summit.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Fable?
It's accuracy of the budgeting process is critical to bring our numbers in and not to create pressure on taxpayers or our ability to deliver services. We manage the budget through a budget amendment process requiring your approval. We're here tonight to ask you to approve the First Amendment, which is essentially related to donations and grants and more money coming in, which is nice. Jeff, who manages the overall budget amendments, is here if you have any questions about budget amendment number one. We usually have about four of these a year.
Any other comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance 2014-32.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordinances, ordinance amending Chapter 2 Administration, Subchapter 2-2 Board of Commissioners of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to make changes related to revisions in Kentucky law and add language for elections of the Board of Commissioners.
Summit.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Fable?
Yeah, I think it'd be appropriate for Gene to give a brief overview of this. The mayor may want to add comments as a sponsor, but Gene can give, explain what it's about.
Well, as J.D. explained earlier tonight when he was here, probably one of the high points of the last legislative session was the reclassification bill that was approved, doing away with the six classifications of Kentucky cities. It did always feel bad being called a second-class city, because we never knew exactly what that meant, but it's like, you know, we were down the line somewhere. But now we are all called home rural cities. So there's a lot of, if I remember the statutes, 160 pages, I forgot what height, it's a huge statute, a big statute, but one of the sections in it, and I'm not sure everybody called it at first, but previously this time, certain classifications of cities, I think it was fourth, fifth, and sixth, had the ability to do away with the primary election. Second-class cities couldn't. This new statutory language though now says that all home rural cities have the ability to do that. So that's what kind of started this change in Chapter 2. One of the things being proposed in this is to do away with the primary election in May of each year, or at least every other year when the year elections, which will now, the beginning point to file will stay the same in November, but will extend the filing point now to a date in August with no primary election in May. And I've never run for office, but you all may very well like that, you don't have to do two elections. So that's what kind of started this. While we looked at Chapter 2 though, when he also made changes, previously second-class cities, city-managed form of governments, we ran citywide elections, nonpartisan. When you start looking at this home rule statutes with statutory changes, we had a little bit of trouble finding that same language. So we wanted to clarify and put it back in here, not changing anything, just clarifying that city will stay, nonpartisan elections with citywide elections. So we're putting language in here to make sure that's clear, because the statutes raised a little bit of ambiguity about that. So we made those changes as well. And Katie pointed out when we was about done with this, probably a good point, that there are certain sections in this chapter that still refer to second classifications. So while we're in here, we'll go ahead and remove that and change those things to home rule to do away with that language, kind of clean up language there. But the main thing this does is does away with the primary elections and clarifies that our elections still will remain citywide, nonpartisan.
I know we had a work session on this previously to explain the bulk of, or the meat of what we were discussing, but we have to notify Kentucky Secretary of State of much of what we're notifying, what we're doing in this language. So rather than wait till after the first of the year and going back and acknowledging what we are, it's just easier, cleaner to go ahead and do it now.
Yes.
There'll be no more primaries. If there are nine commissioners running, we won't have an election to knock one of them off, so.
But this is only affecting city elections.
That's correct.
Yes.
And as a reminder again, city elections are on the backside of the ballot this year. Pay attention. Any other comments or questions?
Please call or roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2014 to 14.
Municipal Order approving amended agreement between the City of Bowling Green and St. Joseph Foundation Incorporated related to the provision of cemetery services.
Summit.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. Mr. Fable?
Thank you, Mayor. Since 2011, the city has been in agreement with the St. Joseph Cemetery Foundation to do essentially an opening and closing of graves there at the Catholic Cemetery. We're here tonight to continue that relationship and to make some minor adjustments to the cost profile between us and St. Joseph's Foundation. Brent tells me this has been fully vetted and they're aware of these changes and we asked your approval. Brent is here if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Resolution BG-WCCA-57.
A resolution of the City of Bowling Green, section of the Bowling Green Warren County Cable Franchise Authority approving the transfer of control of the cable franchise agreement from Comcast Corporation to Charter Communications Incorporated.
Summit.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams.
It seems the whole cable industry across America is under significant change and transformation. We're not immune from that as changes are occurring here in our community. I think it'd be appropriate for Gene to explain what resolution number BG-WCCA-57 is about. And answer any questions. Gene?
As far as everybody knows, we are nearing the end. We're almost at the end of 18 years of our 20-year franchise agreement for cable service here in Bowling Green, Warren County. There is a joint authority between the city commission and fiscal court, but we're nearing the end of an existing 20-year franchise. That franchise has changed hands five, six, seven times. I think it's all listed here, I'd have to go back and see how many times. But I think everybody remembers, a couple of years ago, it was assigned and transferred to Time Warner. Earlier this spring, we received notification from Time Warner that they were attempting and wanting to sell that franchise to Comcast. We did a resolution approving that transfer, of course contingent upon federal approval, FCC and the Justice Department. That's not yet been done. I think everybody's anticipating and hoping, and we do have cable representatives here with us as well, that that will be done early after the beginning of next year, but with, you know, Congress, who knows when that may happen. But that's still pending. Not too long after that, and I think probably as part of that same event, I think Comcast came in and maybe to try to satisfy some of the concerns about that transfer from Time Warner, that they would sell off and transfer some of the franchises they were getting to Charter. Most of Kentucky is among those, if not all of Kentucky, is among those franchises that Comcast is now agreeing to sell to Charter, including one from Bowling Green and Warren County. So we received written notification asking us to approve that transfer. That's what's before you tonight. This resolution also has the same language, of course, that this has got to be contingent upon a federal approval of the transfer from Time Warner to Comcast and approval of the agreement then from Comcast to Charter. So it's still our certain contingencies that probably all won't be met until early part of next year. But this resolution still goes ahead and approves the transfer from Comcast to Charter. Probably, I'm hoping in the, I guess it'll be the second meeting in November, we'll skip the first one, that we'll be coming back to you with an ordinance, first read of an ordinance extending the existing one. We only have two years that we can go, and after that, we have to re-advertize, but probably we'll be back in November with a two, request a two-year extension of the existing franchise. That extension will probably be with Time Warner, since technically, since the feds hadn't approved everything yet, Time Warner is still the holder of our franchise, so that renewal probably will be with them, but we'll figure out the logistics of that in the next two or three weeks. But again, the only thing we've got for you tonight is approving the requested transfer from Comcast to Charter. Does that make sense to everybody?
Even though it's, we don't have an agreement with either of them at this point.
Excuse me?
Even though we don't have an agreement with either of them at this point.
Well, once they sent us the letter, that kicked in, the 120-day requirement for us to respond, and technically, we may be a couple of days past there. I think we're real close to that timeframe. And there's only certain reasons we can deny it, as long as they have the technical capability to operate a system, they have legal ability to operate a system. We don't have any issues with the existing franchise, significant enough that we can deny the request. There's really not a whole lot of basis, and I'm not sure we saw any basis to deny the request. So contingent upon all the federal approvals coming through, as soon as those are done, then Charter will be the owner of the franchise here. And I would be glad to open it up. I think Mr. Gregory is here with Charter, and I'm sure they'll be glad to try to answer anything.
Do you have something to add to it? You're welcome to.
If I haven't muddied the water enough.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Brian Gregory from Charter Communications. I think Mr. Harmon gave an excellent summary. One point I would add is that if you all do go ahead and do a two-year extension on your current agreement with Time Warner Cable, both Comcast and Charter eventually step into the shoes and assume those same requirements of whatever the current agreement is. So Charter's very anxious to come in and be the service provider. We're known for providing very fast broadband speeds, 60-meg minimum service, and 200-hD channel.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
The only thing that I would say, I've been through several of these in my lifetime on both sides of the aisle, but the current franchise that's being operated under, was actually written with TKR Cable some 20 years ago. So it's been transferred a couple of times and different operators have been in the offices and in the trucks that are driving around town. The comments and concerns that, of course, I'm hearing from your customers, soon to be your customers around the community are can they expect better service, hopefully avoid rate increases, get more channels, and more responsive, more responsive answers when they call on the telephone. So those are some of the issues that stand in front of you, and I think you have some public perceptions to repair in this community.
And in Kentucky, Joe, did you mention that?
There is an issue about, there had always been a station from Louisville, Kentucky that had been provided on our cable channel lineup, and because of various technical reasons, it has disappeared from our lineup. I think that there is a concern in this community that they would like to have that back. If that is technically and legally possible, it's something that I would certainly encourage you to look into. I know that network non-duplication and syndicated exclusivity are things that are going to enter into the picture, but I think there may be one station that you could bring in and avoid those, avoid those problems, but again...
We know more about Tennessee news than we do with what takes place within our own state. And as Rick mentioned, there was a local Louisville, Louisville channel that came into us. Was it through E-Town or how did E-Town play you?
Actually, it was, it was picked up on the southernmost tip of its broadcast contour, which is actually at Nolan Lake, and it was microwaved in from that point. That's not a good way to do it for a number of different reasons, and you know that, you're technically astute, and there's got to be a better way, there's got to be a cheaper way, and if it can be, if it can be done, I'm sure that the people of this community would appreciate it.
Although we love BK.
It's not competition with BK.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order approving Curriacus Park Indoor Hitting Facility Agreement between the City of Bowling Green and Bowling Green East Little League. So may.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febo?
At four o'clock, we had our second discussion concerning the Curriacus Park Indoor Hitting Facility that is being proposed between Corey Hart and East Little League and the City of Bowling Green. There was a good discussion. A number of the issues were discussed. We were here tonight to entertain the agreement that has been woven by Brent, Deltor, Gene, and representatives of Mr. Hart and East Little League. Brent is here, if you have any questions, as is Dr. Jay, if you have any questions.
I think we've had some pretty thorough discussion over the last three, three times, I believe, we've had an opportunity to do it. Is any comments or discussion?
I just wanted to say, I just stand by my comments I made at the working session.
Anyone else?
I'd like to say that I appreciate the way the groups have come together and worked together with the Parks and Recreation Department. I think that there's been some flexibility that certainly made it better.
Anyone else? Certainly want to give everybody an opportunity to speak. We waited long enough to get there. All right, please call the roll.
Waltrip?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Denny?
No.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
That's the final item on the agenda. We'll remind everybody that November 4th is Election Day, and we will not be meeting on that day. It's our regular meeting day. So we'll return on November 18th, and again, the city commission is on the back of the ballot. Thank you for attending.
Joe, good job. What's that?